Good evening. At this time, we'd like to invite everyone to Wycomico County Council Meeting and call to order with the opening prayer and Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name.
Forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation; but deliver us from evil. Thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
To the life of the United States of America and to a republic which stands one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to ask everyone if they could please keep their mask on unless they're speaking. They can drop the mask and then put it back when they're done speaking. Also, if you have a cellphone, please make sure they're turned off so we don't have any disturbances. At this time, I need a motion to approve a consent agenda and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Ms. Harley.
We actually have Mr. Taylor on the agenda first this evening for a public hearing.
Mr. Taylor.
Good evening. This is public hearing for legislative bill number 2020-06, an act to amend the 2020 operating and capital budget to increase the Wycomico Youth and Civic Center budget in the amount of $530,000 by transferring $200,000 from the Recreation and Parks prior year fund balance, by transferring $75,000 from the Recreation and Parks current year budget savings, and by transferring $255,000 from the general fund contingency. And I think Mr. Miller is here.
Is Mr. Miller here?
Listened, but I don't.
Pam, okay.
Mr. Miller could not be here, but we do have representation from the Department of Recreation and Parks.
Ms. Olin, you can come up, just in case there's any questions.
Today.
At this time, we'd like to open the floor to the public hearing. If there's any public comments, please state your name and county of residence. Now, the public comments are for this bill only. So this time, Ms. Olin, can you state your name and your position?
Hi, I'm Pam Oland, Acting Finance Director for Wycomico County. As I am the one who has helped craft this legislation, I'm asking the council to have the public hearing this evening, and then I have actually made a request to not vote on this this evening so that I can talk to you more fully in a work session next meeting. And so, since this was already advertised, and hold the public hearing, but hold off on the vote at this moment if council is agreeable.
Okay. Are there any public comments on this bill? Any public comments? With that said, close the floor to public comments. Do we have any questions for Ms. Olin? Any questions?
When we have the work session, you'll be able to explain for the benefit of the citizens just exactly what this money's going for.
Yes.
And why we're having to do the transfers.
Yes, and I will give the explanation and reason why we believe 2020 is the appropriate year for the amendment to happen versus 2021.
Any more questions?
Ms. Harley?
Yes.
After the public hearing, how many days will we have left to pass this bill?
The drop date on this bill is actually October the 3rd. So council, to have the work session at the September 15th meeting would also need to adopt the resolution to extend the vote on that bill to October the 6th, which is our first meeting in October.
That, or we could have the work session before the legislative session?
That's a possibility.
Okay.
All right, so the next time, go ahead.
I know there's been some discussion back and forth about whether it should be done in 2019 or 2020. It'd be nice if you could get all that worked out before the next meeting, so we're not arguing about it then.
That will be my hope.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Ms. Harley?
Okay, so good evening, Mr. President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. Next on the agenda is the submission of a new appointment to the Social Services Advisory Board. In accordance with Section 315 and 413 of the Wycomico County Charter, the Acting County Executive has submitted an appointment to the Social Services Advisory Board. This board selects a director for the Department of Social Services and advises the director and state director as to the local application of state policies or procedures. Members are to be well informed on local department activities and to communicate to residents of the county information as to the objectives, policy, programs, and problems for social services and public assistant administration. Resolution number 89-2020 is confirming the appointment of Nicole Ackley as a member of the Social Services Advisory Board.
Okay, at this time, I need a motion to approve Resolution number 89-2020.
So moved.
Got a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of Resolution 89-2020, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye, vote passes unanimously. Ms. Harley.
Next for your consideration is Resolution number 90-2020, to make a supplemental appropriation from contingency to the Department of Finance in the amount of $50,000 for TGM Group LLC Accounting Services. And we do have Mrs. Pam Oland here, if there are any questions.
Okay, need a motion to approve Resolution number 90-2020.
So moved.
Got a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion?
Are we through this? Are they done? Or is there going to be more bills?
Well, this actually is to authorize us to be allowed to use them. We have $25,000 currently available to us to use them, but their estimate is significantly more than that. Now, their estimate was based on the idea that there wasn't going to be an Acting Finance Director. They thought they were going to have to step in and kind of take on the whole role and get prepared for the audit. So I have, through discussions with Mr. Posoda, brought the number down from what their original estimate was. I believe that with me sitting in the seat and me being able to help them get us ready, we'll be able to accomplish it for the 25 that's already on the books and then this additional $50,000 that we're asking for. And I'm hoping to not use all of that, but they only started this week.
Because this is highly unusual. I mean, this is the first time the counties actually had to bring in somebody else to try to get ready for the budget, I assume. Is that correct?
Actually, it's the second time.
They used them last year as well.
Well, I'm talking about them, this situation, not necessarily, but.
So, TGM was brought in last year to help with the 2019 audit, and they have been brought in to also help us get prepared for the 2020 audit.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holloway. Any more questions? Any more questions? Ms. Olin, you said 25,000 to 50,000, and you're hoping it's going to be less than 75,000.
My hope is to be less than 75, but it would not go over $75,000.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor of Resolution number 90-2020, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye, passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Olin. Ms. Harley.
Mr. President, that is all I have.
Okay, Mr. Taylor.
This is the, excuse me, bear with me a second, wrong paper here. This is introduction for legislative bill 2020-05, which is an act to amend Chapter 29 of the Wycomico County Code, Article II, Title Grant Funds, Section 29-18 through 29-21, and to add Sections 29-22, 29-23, and 29-24, to provide for greater transparency and full accountability of the county's allocation of grant funds. And you may recall that at the last meeting, we discussed two different types of amendments to this, and we've had further discussions on at least one type of the amendments with Ms. Oland, and have some suggested other language for that. And I'm going to defer to Ms. Harley because she was kind of the record keeper on our discussions on that, Laura, so if you'd like to at least mention those when we get to it.
Sure. So, in looking at the bill that's on the council table that shows the proposed changes in yellow, it was discussed initially that it would say in Section 29-19C, it would say "effective upon receipt thereof." That is what was discussed at the last meeting. Pam Oland has suggested that council change the language to say "effective upon grant award," and Mr. Taylor has agreed to that change. So that is one of the amendments. And then Number E is language that Mr. Taylor had recommended at the last meeting, and that says, "If the grant is for reimbursement for other funds expended for the purpose of the grant, the grant revenue shall be applied to restore any appropriation or borrowing of other county funds expended in order to obtain the reimbursement and to discharge county debt for any funds that is borrowed for such expenditure." And then E was then made to F, and they're all highlighted for you. And then in Section 29-20, the very last paragraph, again, it says "effective upon grant award."
Before we have any discussion, I need a motion to approve Legislative Bill number 2020-05 and a second.
Mr. Taylor, did you say this was an introduction?
This, if I may?
Second reading, then.
It is second.
Yes, so council's already introduced this bill. We've already had a public hearing on it, so it's on council's table for a vote tonight.
It was introduced July 21st, I'm sorry. It's okay.
Mr. Don, does our motion need to be amended, or?
We're going to amend it. First, need a motion to introduce this right now, so I thought I heard somebody make a motion.
So moved.
Do I have a second? All right, any discussion?
I'll make a motion to accept it with the amendments that were just discussed.
Okay, got a motion to accept with the amendments, and do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Mr. President?
Yes?
Is it possible to, may not be part of the text that we're able to edit at this point in time, but the pronoun on 29-19, Section A, the very bottom of Page 2, has a his in there for the county executive. We could have the county executive as a woman, or, but I don't like the language that's in there.
Right.
And if we can clean it up, but if we're not able to clean that up at this time.
What pronoun would you like?
I would just take it out completely.
It may help. I believe the Charter specifies that any reference in any legislative bills to he, his, or whomever might be actually taken into consideration, he or her.
So you're saying that covers this?
Section of the Charter actually covers that, that says, "No matter what the particular, what do you call it, gender is noted in the bill, is to be reflected as he or her,"
Okay.
"or his or hers."
Thank you for that, Mr. Cannon. Are you okay with that, Mr. Holloway? I mean, yeah, Hastings.
Yeah, that's fine. It's really not, there's not even a pronoun even needed there, because the county executive shall also provide written recommendations, what it should read, not his, but either way, yeah.
I second it.
I understand.
What was that, you second?
Yeah, he wants to take it out completely.
All right, got a motion and a second to take the pronoun out. Any discussion?
Is that in addition to the other amendments that were already read into the record?
You want to combine all of them? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I'll just modify my motion to accept Mr. Hastings' request.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all right. Everyone's in favor of the amendment, so now I need a roll call to approve Legislative Bill 2020-05 as amended. All in favor, please say aye. I'll be doing a roll call. Mr. Cannon.
Aye.
Mr. Hastings.
Aye.
Ms. Ackley.
Aye.
Mr. Holloway.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. McCain.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Legislative Bill number 2020-05 as amended passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Mr. Hitchens.
Good evening. I call your attention to Resolution 91-2020, to amend the annual audit plan for fiscal year '21 to include a workplace culture audit.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve Resolution number 91-2020. Any discussion? All those in favor of Resolution number 91-2020, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye, motion passes. All right, this time, we're going to have public comments, and we're going to limit public comments to three minutes. If you would, please go to the podium, state your name and your county of residence, and if you have any copies to submit, please include 10 copies for all the council members and staff.
My name's Darren Lombardo. I'm a fellow member of the Delmarva Parent Teacher Coalition, and I didn't plan to come this evening, but something was published today that I wanted to inform you about. Today, the Wycomico County Board of Education academic schedules were released and were provided to students. To our surprise, there was not four core subjects on the schedule. There was only two core subjects. That means that each student receives only two core subjects in the first semester or half the first, half of the school year, and then in the second half of the school year, the second semester, they receive two more cores. And so I have an example here. In the first semester, we have English, and we have history for half the school year, and the second, Algebra II as an example, and then honors chemistry. So, in order for the school system to teach a core subject in four months flat, the school system must remove certain lessons or content within the lesson plan in order to reduce the time it takes to complete the course in half the time. The quality of the curriculum is designed to be taught over an entire school year, and this practice will compromise the quality and completeness of providing an adequate education. The school system could not achieve this in an ordinary day with in-person instruction, let alone be able to achieve this in a distant learning environment. So I wanted to present this to the council this evening and ask that the council make some phone calls, talk to some people in the Board of Ed. Maybe they'll answer your phone calls, because parents are having difficulty there. And on the last page, you can look at that on your own, in accordance with the Wycomico County Board of Ed Recovery Plan Assurances, and the terminology used, this opening schedule seems to conflict with their promises. So I just wanted to point that out to you, so you're informed and you know what's going on. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Lombardo. Any more public comments?
My name's Dave Cooper. I'm a Wycomico County resident, District 4. Come before me tonight, because I do have a few things I would like to address. One of the things I would definitely want to bring up to your attention is, you know, we would really like to see a more expeditious manner for the selection of our upcoming executive. We understand that, you know, you guys are taking into consideration a lot of different things, but I just want to make sure that when you guys do make this choice, that, one, when you do your interviews, you select the best candidate at that time of the interviews. Okay? We don't drag it down any further. It's a real disservice to all of us. You know, if we want to help, if we can help in any way, let us know. If you need public input, let us know. But the way that it's been handled up to this point, I'm not sure that, in fact, I don't have to say I'm not sure. You guys have seen all the comments. One other thing I would like to bring up is, another thing that's been dragging along that we really need to get back onto the agenda, a Second Amendment resolution. There's been, you know, more and more push for it, and I know that, you know, as being one of the admins for that group, we definitely want to see that come back onto the agenda soon. Okay? Thank you guys very much. Have a great night.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper.
I'm Martin Hutchison. I live here in Wycomico County, been here for 21 years. I watched with great interest the interview process a couple of weeks ago. I watched with great interest the work session that you all held last week, and these are unprecedented times, and times that our county finds ourselves in that none of us wants to be in. We did not expect Bob Culver to die, and we did not expect to be in a position to need to name outside of an election a successor to him. That being said, we find ourselves in a situation that is even more difficult and challenging because the candidate that the majority of you selected has withdrawn, and that left two further candidates, which for some reason, you, the four of you who voted for Dr. Damaris, are not willing to entertain. The role of a leadership, and I'm just here simply to remind you that as leaders in our county, it is your job to listen. And as I listen from a distance to both the comments, the public comments after the interview process, and as I listen to the comments, and I've listened in the communities in the time between the interview and now, it feels that there's a strong urge of your constituents to go with the strongest candidate that was presented that night, and that's Delegate Carl Anderton. Now, I don't know why, what's going on. I know perception is not, my perception of what is happening is that there's something happening behind the scenes and under the table that doesn't look good. And if you all would listen, then maybe we could get this done and move on. And we do need to move on, because our county does need to know where we're going to go in the future. And so I thank you for your time. I recognize that your job is hard, and I encourage you very strongly to listen to the people that put you in the seats that you sit in tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Hutchison. You have any more comments?
My name is Scott Hamilton, Wycomico County resident. I'm also the president of the Fraternal Order Police here in Wycomico County, represent all the agencies in Wycomico County. We were unable to formally endorse any particular candidate for the position of county executive, but I would also like to echo the expressed interest of getting this done expeditiously, sticking with the rules that were already laid out. Don't change the midstream again now, that things have not typically gone the way that you anticipated them to go. Personally, as an individual, as a voter in this county, I do also support Carl Anderton. I'm here to show him my support tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton.
Good evening, council. My name is Rick Green. Appreciate the opportunity to again address you for a moment. First of all, let me say to several of the members of the council, I do very much appreciate you accepting my phone calls the last week, and you graciously explained to me your thinking and position, and that is much appreciated. That, to me, speaks of leadership as well. Quite often, I know that we gather in sessions, and there's critique from those perhaps in the public versus those in the position of having to make difficult decisions, and you folk are in that position of making those difficult decisions. So it's important to me, at least, to say to you, thank you, and to let you know that all of your efforts, all of your efforts are very much appreciated. I would also like to, again, endorse Carl, I believe Delegate Anderson is the man for the job. There may be political interests here, perhaps not, but nonetheless, as you consider and deliberate over the next period of time, whatever that may be, may I just simply suggest that rather than on a lower level that we have had discussions on the 20th, let's move the bar even higher as political individuals and people in the community, and let's do, regardless of our personal thoughts, what is very best for Wycomico County, and I believe that is Carl. So thank you very much again for all that you do.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Any more comments?
Get this thing off for a second. My name is Bruce Robson, Wycomico County resident, and I'm basically going to echo what the previous folks have said. You know, it does look bad. It looks bad. I can't tell you how many folks have said to me, "What's going on? There's something going on behind the scenes." I personally do not believe that. I do not believe that. But the fact that the reasons, and Mr. Green apparently got more than is publicly acknowledged, the reasons given are either nonexistent or frankly, weak. And as a result, even though I do not believe that there's anything untoward happening, the fact that people say it, I think, is very understandable and reflects badly on all of us, on our county, and not just the council. I also support Delegate Anderton. He seems like a perfectly good choice. We've got 45 days, as I gather the Charter says, and so let's just do it. Let's get it done.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Any more comments?
My name's John Tarr. I'm a Wycomico County resident as well. Just like to echo, as others have done the comments before, you know, I think we've got 45 days. We had a good candidate.
Can you speak into the mic, please?
I'm sorry about that. You know, we had 45 days to get this done. We had a good candidate come in, give an interview, and I agree, I think there's some things that you don't want to think are happening, or I'm sure are not happening, but it does kind of give a bad impression for a lot of folks. So hopefully, we can get this done, and I do support Delegate Anderton as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments?
My name is Joey Gilkerson, and thanks for hearing me out. Like many said before, I don't envy your position. It's a very difficult job to try to make a decision that over 30,000 people made just two short years ago. But like many others, I'm very disappointed, disappointed in the process through and through, disappointed in moving the goalpost, disappointed in the interpretation of the Charter to be able to move the goalpost. I support Delegate Anderton, but more so, I support democracy, and I think that you guys are failing us as a constituent base. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gilkerson. Any more comments? Any more comments? Okay, closing the floor to public comments. This time, we'll have council comments. Any council comments? Mr. Hastings.
Just on that topic of the county executive appointment, I would also just echo the, first of all, I appreciate the public and their comments and the folks that have come out, but I would echo that however we go forward, we should make sure we, as a body, are crystal clear in how we'll go about the interviews, as well as the deadlines, and then the process itself. So I don't know how we are going to determine that. Maybe that's through later today, or I'm not quite sure myself, and I'm a member of the council, but I do want to make sure that it is clear to the public, and we put out a press release. So that's all I have on that.
Thank you, Ms. Hastings. Do we have any more comments? Okay, closing council comments. This time, I'd like to thank everyone for showing up and offering your thoughts, and we really appreciate it. So thank you again. Hope you have a good Labor Day weekend coming up. But this time, need to turn from legislative session and go into open work sessions, followed by a closed work session pursuant to General Provisions, Article, Section 3-305B7, to consult with legal counsel to protect the attorney-client privilege. Need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Got a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. All in favor, please say aye. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye. Thank you. Ms. Hurley?
Your first open work session is with Mr. Tony Rudy, the airport manager, to discuss using CARES grant funds for the airport rescue and firefighting truck.
Could you please state your name and your position, and why you're here?
Yes, good evening. Tony Rudy, I'm the airport manager, and here tonight to talk about using or reallocating some planned funds, or CARES Act funds we had, for an important purchase at the airport. And I'd like to explain a little bit, kind of how, give you a little bit of history of how this whole project came about. It was earlier in the year, very late in the budget cycle, when the airport was talking with both the FAA and the MAA for their ACIP program going forward. And in discussions with MAA, some projects we've talked about in past years, it became pretty clear that the amount of money we were asking for, particular grants, was usually way above what MAA would even consider to go out there. It also became clear that many of these projects were lower on their priority list, so it didn't take too long to figure out that we didn't have a good chance of getting any grant money from MAA, and they really wanted to help us out in any way they could. So, we had very frank, open discussions. I asked them, you know, what type of projects were they looking for, what were higher priority than we've asked for in the past, and what was the more realistic dollar value so we could, you know, hopefully obtain money. One of the priorities we have at the airport, you know, as you're probably aware, there are a lot, but one is the firefighting equipment that we have. Our newest truck, our front-line truck, is 15 years old now. These things generally have around a 10-year lifespan at that point. FAA, you know, FAA typically will fund these for airports because they're required, and after 10 years, you know, they'll look at refunding a purchase of that if it's appropriate at that time. A couple of years ago, from my understanding, this truck broke down. It was not, it couldn't be repaired in a timely manner, and we were lucky enough to get a donor vehicle from BWI to use while repairs were getting done. Since that time, we've got a more permanent backup vehicle that was donated from BWI. But both of these vehicles have been very maintenance-intensive, to the tune of, I believe, it's somewhere over $60,000 in the last two years, just to make them reliable so we can respond to an incident if need be. So, again, like I said, it was late in the budget year. We provided FAA and MAA kind of a list of our projects, and I don't recall the timeframe. I believe it was around July that MAA was willing to grant us $315,000 or up to 70% of the purchase of the truck, whichever was less, and it turns out $315,000 would be the lesser amount. So, we applied for the grant, and our thought was, before the grant's awarded, we could figure out how we're going to come up with a local share, which is another $412,000. CARES money came to mind, and actually, let me step back a moment. So, we thought we had that time period before the grant was awarded. However, MAA told us, "Well, time out a minute. They need to be assured that we have local funds in place before they're going to give us that grant offer." And that grant offer, September 30th is basically our deadline to tell them we have secured local funding for this project. Now, the project will take, or the build time will take about a year, so this will...
When is the deadline?
September 30th is the deadline to let MAA know...
It's kind of short notice, isn't it?
Yeah, a little bit. Well, the one big issue we've been working with, and it, I guess it didn't come to mind from my perspective, that, you know, we should be presenting this to council. I was looking to get approval from FAA to use these funds out of CARES to begin with, and, you know, typically, these projects are, they are FAA-eligible for funding. You follow a, basically, a guideline of how you put the truck specs together. So, it should be a no-brainer, however, with any of these CARES Act-funded projects, we're waiting for FAA guidance on, and it became apparent to me, probably a couple of weeks ago, that this does need to come before council to make sure that you're okay with moving some money around within that pot of money for this project that is eligible.
With that said, Ms. Hurley, would we have to then do a resolution at the next meeting to state, so we can get this, just, I'm not trying to get ahead of ourselves, but assuming that the council, you know, supports this, you know, would we have to a resolution the next meeting?
That is correct. Actually, I do believe that this project needs to be added to the capital improvement program and capital budget for fiscal year '21, which is going to require a public hearing, and we can do that at the next meeting. Then, we would do an amendment to that Exhibit A that was adopted at a prior council meeting. If you remember, council approved a resolution. I don't remember what that resolution number is off the top of my head, but council approved the CARES grant funding, and attached to that resolution was a list of projects, which is what he's talking about shifting money around with. So, that Exhibit A to that resolution would also need to be amended as well, and we should be able to accomplish all of that at the next meeting.
Can we simultaneously do some kind of resolution, just to say that, you know, to give confirmation about the local funding, because once you need that, Tony, once you need, because you need some kind of commitment by the 30th, or assurance? I don't know how firm they need to be with that local commitment.
Well, I do need, yeah, there's two things. I need a commitment, I guess locally, and I also need a commitment from FAA that, you know, that we can use those funds for that purpose, which, under normal circumstances, would be eligible, but this grant is, I guess they didn't anticipate, many, many development projects, they anticipated more the grant being used for, you know, everyday expenses, which we are using it for, but we were one of the lucky airports that had, you know, that extra amount.
Our next council meeting's September the 15th, so we should be able to meet his deadline.
Okay. Any more questions?
I have just a couple detailed questions.
Mr. Taylor?
As I understand the new score sheet you've provided, $344,000, that was for fiscal year '20 for hangar interior, that's now being shifted over for what the truck...
Yes, it looks like, well, there's kind of two things there. I don't believe, well, because the hangar's being built now, trying to fund it, trying to get FAA to buy off on that would be difficult at best, and we had enough funds that we could complete it, so that shouldn't be an issue there. So, that's why I was looking at that particular item.
The $344,000 can be shifted?
Yes.
Yeah. Now, there are two other items, though, for FY '20. Were they spent? There's $820,000 for operating and maintenance, and I don't recall that we ever discussed it, or, I mean, is that still available? Is that unspent money that would be available for out years?
Yeah, so that's going back to, we can reimburse expenses back to January 20th of this year.
So, you still want the $820,000 for fiscal year '20?
Yes.
Then there's another $36,000 item.
Yes, and when we laid this out, this was our best guess as to when, you know, when we would spend it, and I'm sure some of that's going to shift. Obviously, the terminal roof project, and, you know, those are things we still want to go ahead and do. However, we're going to be, we're going to be waiting on the FAA to...
You need more than $820,000 for fiscal year '20?
I'm sorry?
You need more than $820,000 for fiscal year '20, or is that, will that essentially do it, or...
No, that was our best guess as to what costs we would have, you know, lacking revenue from, you know, rental cars, parking lot, things like that. So, again, these were best guess numbers, especially going back in time to January 20th, and the future years show what our, you know, projected...
My only thought, general thought, was if we could, when we come in for the rest of it, if we could just get the rest of it sort of updated.
Updated?
Yeah.
Sure, sure. I'll take my shot at that.
Howie? Did you have a question?
Yes, it's, yeah...
Truck has to be ordered, yes. And about how long will that take to, is it...
It'll take a year to build.
Take a year.
Yeah, so it'll be probably September next year by...
This doesn't really have anything to do with the financing or anything. Is that truck equipped to go off the airport, say there was an airplane crash on the approach or something like that, or is it...
Yes, and that's...
Yes and no? Is that what you're trying to say?
Yes, yes, it can. We are responsible for, on airport property and in the vicinity of the airport.
I see.
If you're asking as far as responding for mutual aid for something like, say, a tanker fire, that's a different story.
I understand.
But there is, there are things we can and can't do.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions? The question I have is, this is a capital piece, it's fire equipment. Do you have experience in the fire service? Who's giving you guidance about this?
As far as bidding the truck?
That wasn't bidding, for one, but to put equipment, to order this, usually, if you go to any of these cities that has a paid fire department, they'll have, even the volunteers, when they want to spend money like this, a million dollars, and they want to buy an expensive piece of equipment, they'll have a chief officer with experience. Do you have anybody there that can...
I've got, well, just to give you some of my background, I've got 13 years of volunteer firefighter experience. I've had four years in aircraft rescue and firefighting experience, and the FAA has a set of standards. They basically have a checklist, depending on your size of airport and the amount of agent you have to carry on the trucks. And they're very, they limit you to, there are very few options that you can buy, so it's structured that, you know, basically, the truck specs are spelled out for you. You get to pick and choose, you know, if you want halogen lights or LED lights. I'm serious. It's that, and even the equipment. Now, this is just for the truck only. We also put out a bid for equipment, but we didn't get any responses, so we may be looking at that next year. But we're going to really consolidate what we have now and figure out what we really...
Well, thank you for your volunteer service. I don't really know what's going on out there, because I know the contract was formed a couple of years ago, and don't even know what kind of rank structure, employees you have out there. Do they have any say in how this is being ordered?
Yeah, they were involved when it came to the options.
Okay, good.
They were involved in the process.
All right, thank you. Are there any more questions for Mr. Rudy? All right. Ms. Hurley?
The next work session is with Gloria Smith from the Department of Planning, Zoning, and Community Development to talk about several land preservation easements.
Thank you, Mr. Rudy.
Mr. Dodd?
Yes, sir.
I'll be recusing myself from this work session.
I see that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
While my brother...
Could you state your name and your position?
Good evening. I'm Gloria Smith, planner with the Planning and Zoning Department, and the local administrator for the Agricultural Land Preservation Program. We're here tonight because we received five new applications this year that were submitted to potentially sell land preservation easements to the state of Maryland under the Maryland Agricultural Land Preservation Program. All five of those applications meet or exceed the minimum state requirements for location, size, and soils criteria. They've been reviewed and recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission and by the Wycomico County Ag Preservation Advisory Board, and the final step in the review process is a public hearing with the council, because we need a resolution from you all to send up to the state to support the applications.
Ms. Hurley, one, can that be done on the 15th?
We can do that September the 15th at 10:00 a.m.
Okay, sounds good. Do we have any comments for Ms. Smith? Mr. Hastings?
I will say, Attachment Number 10 shows a, it's always good to see multiple conservation easements adjoining each other, and this is, of course, you know, this helps keep farmers in business and helps keep that land, make sure that farming's part of, you know, our ethic for Wycomico County for a long time to come, so it's really nice to see. It's always good. So, thank you, Gloria, for that.
In that particular case, some of those are state easements that have been there for a long time. I think the Allen one goes back to the 1990s, and the Bachelor one also, and then the two that were the Harken properties are actually county easements, when we had some money to purchase, do some local easements purchased locally.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hastings.
Well, one other question, if possible.
Go ahead.
Attachment Six does have the question, "The zoning map boundaries do not match the 2017 survey." Is that, anything that you'd want to say on that, or is any...
There is a red line across that property, and that is, that red line is what was originally shown on the tax maps as the boundary of this property, but I filled it in to match the survey that Mr. McCain submitted.
Thank you.
Porter Mill Properties, were those the properties that a few years back created a whole lot of turmoil and hebrin as far as where they were going to develop there and triple the size?
No, they are, the Porter Mill properties are across Route 50, the bulk of it is across Route 50 and a little bit to the west. It actually wraps around, most of the bulk of it wraps around Jack's Market.
Okay.
So, it's not the same property.
I got you.
Thank you, Mr. Cannon. Any more comments? Ms. Smith, you always do an excellent job when you make your presentation on these. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Okay, at this time, we're going to be moving to a closed work session to consult with legal counsel. Thank you, everyone.